Required to report six o'clock. Uh, tomorrow morning, we'll see what happens. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order, let me get my correct agenda. Quarter order this meeting of the Cunningham Township Board for Monday, October 16th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin? Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Ms. Chenoweth?
President.
Next.
The Wana, she's not here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I don't believe we have any minutes to consider this time. Are there any additions to the agenda? Public participation is next. There's no one in the audience. We'll move on to committee to verify bills for the Town Fund and General Assistance Fund.
Let me turn this on. So in the last month, we had forty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents in Town Fund expenditures. We had seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixteen cents in the General Assistance Fund, and the total was a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eleven cents. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the Town Bills before going on to the supervisor's memo, which I emailed to you this afternoon.
Any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve the Town Fund and GA? So moved?
Second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by James. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 That motion passes. We'll move on to reports of officers.
It so, um, so the, in the supervisor's memo, I just want to show that we've stayed pretty steady with the general assistance. We're at sixty-one participants down from sixty-four. I do know that we had a number of openings this past week, so I expect that to bounce back up. We do track homeless participants carefully, we're not, and down from twelve in August. And as you can see, we got twenty-six applications up from seventeen. I wanna, I know that we had our intern, who's now our staff member, Brittany Tooton, present to you on the Education and Employment Track, and we have been doing a pretty deep dive in our general assistance cases. It's a, it, in our program structure, it is a, we are required to provide general assistance to, at minimum, people with disabilities who have active SSI, SSDI cases. That's what City of Champaign Township does. We've also offered what used to be called the Community Work Program, and it's now the Education and Employment Track. And so we've been doing a deep dive. We've done an eighteen-month look, looking at a lot of data, looking at that. There's been, I would say it's been difficult for a while to have a success in that program, as I think was evidenced in the report presented to you. I'm just giving you a heads up that we're, we're, and I will be most likely presenting on this in November, looking to make changes that improve those program outcomes. And I think just the short version of the story is there's a lot of money and services for workforce development in the community that are, that are really good at what they do. We have both Partner at RBC and Parkland College Adult Education. There's many different services being provided. And in some ways, what we're doing feels like a duplication of those services without the same level of expertise in that area. And so we've really been kind of looking at where we may want to invest more deeply in meeting people's material needs. In particular, the Education Employment Track has a lot of folks who circle in and out of Salt Light, who, and are dealing with some substance abuse issues. That's one component of it. It's not the only component. And so we're really looking at harm reduction in that, in that space, as well as partners that would be best positioned. So I'm just giving you a heads up if you all, you know, have, I know that I am the sole authority of general assistance. I also really work collaboratively with everyone, our town board and our staff, and so wanted to let you know we're having that conversation. But I'm, I do think that we'll see some changes in general assistance in that arena. And with that, those changes, I'd like to really deepen and increase support for people with disabilities. And I'd like to continue to provide some level of support for able-bodied folks who are out of work, so we're, we're looking to see what that will look like. I think the only other thing, I just, you know, we are, I wanted to show you our rental assistance application flow, and so we, you know, April, we were at twenty-six, and we've been between fifty and sixty-five since. I recently looked at the unemployment data. I don't know if you look at Fred very often. I oftentimes, this is like what I do in my spare time. So I look at Fred, and I looked at unemployment data that is tracked, and we are seeing an increase in unemployment locally. So if you look just at Champaign County, you'll see that there is a rise in unemployment that's pretty precipitous, and I was trying to get to the, what is going on with rental assistance and utility assistance? And why are we seeing, we're not seeing the same kind of ebbs and flows? So that, I just, I would encourage you to kind of look at some of the data points around our community as it impacts the most vulnerable. Our rental assistance budget, so we've spent forty-two percent in just the first three months. Not particularly concerned about that at this point because we have county ARPA funds and some county ARPA funds. So I'm not having a budgetary concern, but I do expect us to exceed our budget for rental assistance. I think we'll come under in general assistance and over in rental assistance, and I think we've seen that for a while. And I think it's because housing is the place of greatest need. And frankly, I really, I like being able to pay people's rent off directly. It's very clear and clean. General assistance is sometimes less clear in that way. So the only, let's see, I've just grabbed a couple of other things. I highlighted utility support for you. We did forty, we supported fifty-eight households in September. We do believe that starting in November, we'll see some, in October, with the beginnings of La Heep opening, we'll see reprieve, and in October, we'll see a lot more. And I do know that RBC is pursuing a couple of different funding options that would really help. And they have announced that they will keep La Heep open through the summer, and I think that was in response to some of the conversations we had with RBC about the hardship of the cost of utilities right now, over the summer, especially with the heat wave that we saw. The other thing I want to note is that, and I've been in, I have reached out to both our senator and state representative about an anticipated work requirement that kicks in for SNAP at the end of the month. I can't find any information to say that it will be otherwise, but I know that the state of Illinois has not been happy about that federal mandate. So I'm trying to get some information about what that's going to look like before the end of the month. So just wanted to give you a heads up. We did have a healing harvest. We had about a hundred people show up. This last weekend, it was very cold and windy, and we still had a hundred people show up, based on the number of meals that we provided, meal tickets, one per person for, so I was really proud of that piece. And we will be releasing a video of the performance, the Solidarity Gardens Voices, that was produced as part of a grant, and that. And then I just, you know, I'm actually just going to start screenshotting what it looks like to try to get an appointment at the DMV. If you look at the last page of the supervisor's memo, every couple of days, I go to the DMV at different times of the day, and I screenshot to see if there are any appointments. And I just, there has to be a solution because this means that homeless residents have to go to Rantool to get, to get an ID, and the DMV here is largely empty, and that's a problem. So if you have not spoken with the Secretary of State or your local representatives about this, I would ask you to do so. I am, at this point, I'll be talking to the Continuum of Care about it at the Executive Committee on Wednesday, and I'm thinking about organizing a sign-on letter of local leaders who would sign on for Janulius's office, and so you may be seeing that, and I would request your support in signing on that they allow walk-ins. And I would say for homeless seniors and people with disabilities, I don't want to just carve off the homeless because I actually think that those three populations all need access. Happy to answer any questions you have about the supervisor's memo.
Just want to check to see if Mary Alice has phoned in. I'm hearing crackling from above. Are you there, Mary Alice? Okay, not yet. All right. Doesn't appear to have any questions. Thank you. We'll move on to the quarterly financial report.
So I'm going to start with the Town Fund. If you want to pull up, let's see how it is in your packet. I mean, I should do it. Let's see, um. Okay, so started with, yeah, supervisors. So in your packet, it starts with supervisor. Good news is essentially, and I've highlighted, is that the supervisor has spent at seven percent of my budget, and the assessor has spent at seventeen percent. Some, in part, that's because there's certain large expenditures, like insurance, that haven't come and hit the, hit the books yet. But generally feeling good about where we're at in, in terms of having, staying within our budget. If we did look at the General Assistance Fund, which is underneath that, you will see that we are at seventy, two, two, no, no, twenty-three percent, twenty-three point five. It is mostly grant-driven, so I would expect that we would stay on target, and we'd be at about twenty-five percent at this point, which we are. You will see that utility assistance is way up. You know, we're at two-hundred and twenty-two percent. We do our best to anticipate what expenses are going to look like. But you also see that with general assistance, we're at nineteen percent, which is a pretty large chunk of, of change in that pot, and housing assistance is about on target. I will note that our Angel donor fund is already, we already brought in a hundred and sixty-three percent of anticipated for the year, so yay, Urbana. Appreciate all the donations that help us fill gaps that we could, cannot, and do not anticipate necessarily with our grants. I'm happy to answer any questions you have from the two financial reports for this quarter.
Seeing no questions. Move on to unfinished business. I don't believe there is any. And next is new business.
New business. So first, we have approval of the finance and accounting policies for Cunningham Township. Essentially, the, there, there's a change in law that requires us to shift our accounting policies to comply with new regulations at the level of the state. And we've gotten input from our auditor. We had accounting policies. There's certain pieces that need to be updated or clarified. So you'll see in this our capital asset policy. You'll see our Town Fund balance policy, our investment policy, and our outstanding check policy. And so what I would ask essentially is for a motion for you to confirm these policies, and then if approved, I will share that with our auditor. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the policies.
Let's take a motion first, and then we'll address questions. Any, is there a motion on to approve the four policies provided?
I'll move to approve the four policies.
There's second.
I'll second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Jaya.
I should just mention that a number of the policies, they were, they've all been approved by, excuse me, they've been reviewed by our auditor prior, prior to coming to you. We also have an accountant who helped us, is our accountant, who has helped us with those pieces, so. It has gone through auditor and accountant review, as well as our finance director.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 That motion passes. Next item is Resolution Number T-2023-10-009R, which is a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an MOU and sub-recipient agreement with Champaign County healthcare consumers to provide emergency housing and supportive services. That's EHTH funding for fiscal year twenty-four.
So, I don't know if you want a motion or not. This essentially is a pass-through grant that we received from the state of Illinois through IDHS. Healthcare consumers was written into the grant after we received notice of the grant in early September. It actually started December first, this, September first. We received notice around that time. We've been working to make sure that we have a MOU and sub-recipient grant agreement that align with the grant terms, so that's what you see before you. Essentially, they will operate two hotel rooms for medically fragile individuals referred by Cunningham Township as part of our waitlist. So they're, they're extending our hotel rooms with theirs, and the reason we specifically want them as a partner is because we are working with several folks who are very, very medically precarious and fragile, and healthcare consumers has a relationship with Carl Hospital providers, case, social workers, et cetera, even the, the president, in ways that we don't currently have, and we've, we've reached, we reached out to them to ask if, in those situations where they are case-managing their Social Security disability cases, where there's a specific medical fragility that we would refer folks. So we will essentially continue, it will be under our grant. We will train and manage the reporting of the grant, and this basically allows us to pass through money for a quarter full-time equivalent and two hotel rooms plus two thousand dollars of supplies to healthcare consumers.
Is there a motion? James.
I'll move approval of Resolution Number T-2023-10-009R. A resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an MOU and sub-recipient agreement with Champaign County healthcare consumers to provide emergency housing and supportive services.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by James, seconded by Chandra. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is Resolution Number T-2023-10-010R. A resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an MOU and sub-recipient agreement with Channing Murray Foundation to provide food for Bridge to Home participants. EHTH funding FY twenty-four.
Great, so we, this is a similar situation, except it's a vendor relationship. The Channing Murray Foundation, we approached them first as our bucket brigade partner. As we expand food delivery service, under the terms of our EHTH grant, we are required to provide, I'm just pulling it up now, we're required to provide one meal per day to people staying in the hotel and access to meals for those who have access to the kitchen. We actually hope to provide two meals a day, and we think that with our budget leveraged with Channing Murray Foundation, which has a relationship with the food bank, they already provide one meal a day, but it's very shelf-stable food, and so we ask for additional money that will pay for some more fresh. We also asked for money for air fryers for every hotel room, based on consent of the hotel. And so we now have air fryers, and we'll be able to bring in, and, and soup-warming oper, so we can bring in more fresh and healthy food for people while they're staying in a hotel situation. So we feel good about this, and we will, in the end, be serving, let's see, a hundred and fifty-five people with food assistance.
Any questions? Sharice.
So you're going to provide, or we're going to provide, air fryers to the hotels where the, where people are being temporarily housed?
Yeah, with permission of the hotels, where we have provided air fryers directly to the participants, and it's theirs for them to keep. So everyone who comes in to our program, she is, you know, the rotation is about every four months, so it's not a frequent occasion. They receive an air fryer or another implement to warm things, other than a microwave. And that allows them to have some of the, they are not allowed to have a toaster oven or, you know, hot plate or anything, but they are allowed to have an air fryer in their space.
So I guess my question, so for every, I'm just asking for every, this is for families that are in the hotel room?
Our families are typically in our apartment units. It's very rare that we have families with children in hotels, so it tends to be our medically fragile individuals who are in hotels, and they oftentimes have special dietary needs.
Okay, so I guess my question then is, is so when they, when they leave, they take the air fryer with them, and then we replace the air fryers?
Correct. Yep. We found that to be a better way so that we're not having to deal with who's cleaning the fryer and what the condition of the fryer is. They're very inexpensive.
Okay.
Also, they like having an air fryer when they move into their permanent housing, and it comes along with the housewarming, so almost everyone who leaves our program moves into permanent housing, and they typically get a housewarming that helps them furnish their apartment.
Okay. Any other questions? Could we have a motion?
I'll move Resolution Number T-2023-10-011R. A resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an MOU and sub-recipient agreement with Channing Murray Foundation to provide food for Bridge to Home participants. EHTH funding FY twenty-four.
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by James. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is Resolution Number T-2023-10-011R. A resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Champaign County for, Champaign County Bridge to Home, filling gaps in local homeless and housing services. That's with the ARPA funds.
Yeah, so this basically allows me to sign an agreement to receive the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the county for Bridge to Home. A lot of those dollars are going to help to support our street outreach work and our, and our outreach work generally, although there are other supports that kind of help to fill gaps in some of the other grants that we brought in. So this is, this won't necessarily be the last grant. I actually have a, an S Mass grant that we'll be bringing to you, but it's the last, I think, of the big ARPA dollars.
Questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution Number T-2023-10-011R. A resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Champaign County for Bridge to Home, filling gaps in local homeless and housing services, ARPA funds.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Jaya. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item under new business is Ordnance Number T-2023-10-005. An ordinance levying taxes for all town purposes for the town of Cunningham, Champaign County, Illinois, for the tax year 2023, collectible in 2024.
So this is what we do each year. This year, we're going to do it a month in advance, so we have a little bit more time for the truth in taxation process. But essentially, we are lev, we are proposing to levy two million, five-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. That's most likely not what we will actually levy. But if Carl and OSF come back on the tax rolls, this would cover it, and if they come back on the tax rolls and we don't levy it, we lose it. So what you will see eventually is that, that this, the extension will be cut down, I believe, much closer to about two-point-two. But I have worked with the assessor to come up with a number that would be appropriate in case, you know, best-case scenario for the township.
Questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordnance Number T-2023-10-005. An ordinance levying taxes for all town purposes for the town of Cunningham, Champaign County, Illinois, for the tax year 2023, collectible in 2024.
Second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by James. Is there further discussion? James.
I do, I do want to point out, which I think I do every year, that this is something we need to do because the state of Illinois has legislation regarding tax caps. If we do not put this out there at an amount that seems like we're going to raise the taxes a lot, and these properties that have been declared exempt, at least for the time being, come back on the roll, we would not be able to collect against them. It's kind of, it, you know, I, I talk to constituents about this all the time. It gets confusing. It makes it look like we're doing something that we're not. Tax caps will click in and, and limit how much we can levy. So we will not be able to levy greater than the percentage that's not be able to levy greater than the percentage that's set by, by PTAL. But we have to do this, um, to protect ourselves and to be able to take advantage of all the, um, properties that may be taxable, um, sometime in the future.
Thank you for that. Any further comments, discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And with no further business before the town board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will take up again at seven o'clock with a public hearing and that will be followed by the City of Urbana City Council Committee of the whole. Thank you.
Good evening, I'd like to call the order. The City of Urbana Committee of the Whole, meeting for Monday, October 16th, 2023?
We're doing a public hearing first.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. We're gonna have a public hearing first, and are you doing this, Diane? Or we go to you, right away? Okay. So, I'm sorry. We're gonna go to a public hearing, and Tim Cowan, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Council. We're here to have a public hearing for a street vacation, Boydun Street, from Oakland to Kerr Avenue, per our ordinance.
Excuse me, we need to call the roll, please.
Good idea.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin? Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
First to order business is Tim Cowan? I don't have it. Do you have it? Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry, folks, I didn't have it in front of me. Okay, so this is a notice of a public hearing of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. Notice hereby given that the City Council, the City of Urbana, Illinois, will hold a public hearing tonight in council chambers for the purpose of receiving public comment regarding the proposed vacation of street right-of-way which consists of the remaining portion of Boydun Street between Oakland Avenue and Kerr Avenue. So, is there any public input?
Mr. Chair, Public Works Director Tim Cowan has a brief presentation to give an overview first.
Okay, we're gonna go to that, then. Tim, you have the floor.
Thank you. We're just here to give a brief introduction on the proposed street vacation for Boydun Street from Oakland to Kerr Avenue. The location of this, for anybody that's unfamiliar, it's up off of, both Oakland and Kerr extend off of Cunningham Avenue, and Boydun Street is a short section of right-of-way here on the east side of these commercial developments. Here's a snapshot from street view, as you can see, it's mostly an aggregate access drive that's present on the north half, which is this pink section. The yellow half, denoted here, is all vegetated with no paved way. Short summary, it was originally dedicated in 1906. Development has never really necessitated a public street for surface transportation in this area. That north portion, which was the yellow portion you saw, has been solely used as a private access drive since it was constructed. Best estimates, as I can tell, is the mid-1970s, when there was some development in that area. We don't have any construction records of the public improvements of a roadway in this area. The only known maintenance efforts that we've done along this stretch would be systematic pothole filling, which is similar to what we've done with public alleys, low volume, low risk. That southern portion that we discussed on the previous page, the yellow portion is just a, there's no existing traveled way there, it's just vegetation through there. Public Works recommends the vacation of this right-of-way, and reserving a utility easement for existing and future utility maintenance and construction in this area.
Okay, Therese?
Okay, so why are we vacating this? Is it for, to allow for another property owner, somebody to have that, or how are we gonna do, what is the reason for that?
This, the reason is that this does not serve any public transportation purpose. The north section of Boydun Street, north of Oakland, was vacated in the early 2000s. This street was never vacated in the past, but upon review, we've discerned that this doesn't serve a public purpose, and we have no future needs for extension of roadway between Oakland and Kerr in this area.
So, are we gonna close it off, or is it, is it just going to be, like, kept like it is, and?
Yes.
The city won't fill the potholes or anything?
Correct, correct. We wouldn't maintain it as a street, as it's not being operated as a street.
Okay, it's just like an access road?
Yeah, for, as far as we can tell, its primary use is as an access drive for those blue properties on the screen, denoted as 1,009, 1,009 and a half Boydun Street.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, seen none. Does anybody want to speak to this, in the public? You have five minutes. Okay, seen none, then I guess we are adjourned, then. All right, thank you. I didn't know, thank you, Therese. I didn't know, I had to do that. All right. Okay, so we now go to the City of Urbana Committee of the Whole meeting for October 16th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin? Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next up is the approval of the minutes of a previous meeting. I don't see any. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seen none? Do we have another presentation from Tim, or was that it? Okay. Is there any public input? Please come forward to the mic, state your name, and you have five minutes. Oh, the microphone, standing one over there.
My name is Ben Jocelyn, I'm president of the City of Urbana, and I come before you with a broken heart. As many of you know, just over a week ago, there was a tragic As many of you know, just over a week ago, there was a tragic attack on the state of Israel in which over 1,300 people lost their lives. In the following days and weeks, Israel has turned around and dropped enough bombs on Palestine to kill about twice as many. When I was 11 years old, there was an attack on our twin towers. The world was behind us, and thousands of people in our country lost their lives. In our anger and sadness and lack of knowing what to do, we turned around, and we began a war on terror. That war on terror has encompassed the majority of my life. I'm now 33 years old, and for the most larger part of my life, we have been at war. That war did not make things better. That war did not bring people back. That war cost the life of one of my classmates. I don't wish that on anybody. I don't stand before you asking you to take sides. I don't ask that you understand the whole issue of what's gone forth, what's happened now, what's happened in the past, what will happen in the future. But what I know is that when this country was attacked and responded with violence, that has led to more violence. The U.S. sends $3.8 billion in military aid to Israel every year. The bombs that are falling on those children and civilians are being paid for by the citizens of Urbana as well as the citizens of Israel. I mourn every life lost. When we went to war immediately after, I don't believe that the City of Urbana had enough preparation, or I don't know why, but we didn't condemn that war. We didn't stand against it at that time. But we did say, "We don't want to go to war in Iraq." As I stand before you, more countries are thinking about joining onboard. And I think it's really easy to see a future in which more countries join war, and that the citizens of Palestine, and Israel, and the United States, and around the world see more and more warfare if we don't call urgently for ceasefire now. So I'm hoping that the City of Urbana remembers when it called for peace in 2003 and takes the time and moral compass now to once again say, "We don't want any more bombs falling in our name. We want a peace, we want ceasefire." That's just such a solid place to start. And I hope that you can find it in yourselves to do so. If you want any help drafting that, I'd be happy to email you or do whatever it takes to make that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, seen none. We'll close public input for now. Is there any staff reports? Mayor Marlin?
Couple of announcements. One is that, well, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate Chandra Bishop for being chosen as one of the 40 under-40 individuals in Champaign-Urbana by the Central Illinois Business Magazine. And also congratulate Braden Belcher for receiving the same honor, but as Man of the Year for 40 Under-40. So they will both be honored at a ceremony at the luncheon on Thursday. Secondly, I wanted to let you know that we've received our official date for the partial special census. The date will be October 15th, 2024. That was the first date available from the Chicago region who will be coordinating this effort. So we've filled out the forms, sent in the payment for the federal part of the costs, and planning will get underway. What this will involve is intense effort in the month to six weeks before that date and follow-up effort after that date. But the whole thing should be done next fall. And thirdly, on October 30th, we have a Metropolitan Intergovernmental Committee meeting, which is a mixture of, a gathering of local governments, agencies, et cetera. And we're, we've invited John Dwyer from the County Emergency Management Agency to speak to us, and he'll be giving an overview of the emergency shelter options and other emergency preparations in advance of winter, so that we're a little bit better prepared this winter than we were last winter. And once we get that information, I'll be sharing it with everyone. And I did, I was asked to remind council members, if you haven't commented back to Carol Mitten's email about the proposed process for updating city council goals, please do so. We need to confirm with our facilitator. So you should have gotten an email about that, and if you can't find it, I'll be happy to resend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Marlin. Any other staff reports? Seen none. We'll go on to new business, and we'll start with ordinance number 2023-10-038, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number three, an omnibus. And, Ally, you're gonna do this? Okay, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so we are doing this, this is the third budget amendment for this fiscal year's budget. So first, under the General Operating Fund, we are requesting to transfer $15,000 from salary line item using vacancy savings, and this is to pay for an outside temporary support to do admin tasks in the legal division. And then under HR department, we are requesting to increase their legal services budget by $30,000. And this is to pay for legal fees related to a discipline matter and arbitration on which council was previously briefed on during closed session. Moving on to the next, Capital Replacement and Improvement Fund. So the City of Urbana received two grants. So one is the, the first one, 1 million grants from the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. So this will be structured as a reimbursement grant, which will be used towards the construction of the new fire stations. And out of the 1 million, $11,258 will be allocated to cover admin costs, and this will show as a transfer to CD Special Fund. And then an overview and acceptance of this grant will be provided later on the agenda. The next one is a grant, a $200,000 grant, the same from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. And this is to reimburse for the cost of, the cost spent towards the Vine and Washington Streets resurfacing project, which was completed in fiscal year 2021. And the acceptance of this grant will also be presented later on the agenda. And moving on to the next one, Motor Fuel Tax Fund. So due to the increase in the estimated cost for the engineering design of the Bakers Lane and Florida Avenue multi-use path projects, we are requesting to increase the design budget. So for Bakers Lane, we are requesting to increase $28,840. And for the Florida Avenue project, we are increasing, or requesting to increase the budget by $28,300. So the original budget was based on a 15% of the estimated construction cost, but the final estimate came closer to 18% of the estimated construction cost. And lastly, we are adding, under Community Development Grants Fund, we are adding $247,918 grant that the City of Urbana has been awarded from the Illinois Department of Human Services. So this is the Supporting Municipalities for Asylum Seekers Services Grant, which will fund the cost of housing, shelter, and wraparound services for refugees and asylum seekers who have settled in the Champaign County. A detailed overview of this grant will also be provided and presented by the Community of Development later on the agenda. I believe that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to ask any questions.
Chandra?
I just have a process question. Like, shouldn't we accept the grants before we vote on this omnibus? It seems backwards.
Yes.
Shouldn't this omnibus come last, after we've?
So when, when you actually do the approval, when these are on the regular council agenda, they will come in that order because the grants are likely to be on the consent agenda, but the budget amendment will not be. So you're, you're seeing them in this order tonight, but this is not how they'll actually appear on the agenda for approval.
I don't know if that, like, still doesn't make sense, but, okay.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, I will, seen none. Is there a motion? Oh, Mary Alice, do you have a question?
No, no, that's fine, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion? Sharice?
I'd like to make a motion, ordinance number 2023-10-038, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number three, omnibus, be moved for city council for approval. Can this be done on a consent agenda? Or no? Okay, regular agenda, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by James. Is there any discussion? Seen none, the clerk, oh, sorry, go ahead, James.
Yeah, I do, I do agree with Chandra that it does seem like we're taking this out of order. But I do, I do appreciate the explanation that they will need to be in the reverse order when they actually come up for a vote at council. I understand we're just talking about it now, because it's the committee of the whole, but it will create some additional work if any of the things that follow this do not come through the way we expect them to.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, calling on Elizabeth.
Yeah, I, I would say if any of the following items don't go through, then we can, we can provide a revised exhibit to substitute at next week's meeting.
Thank you. Mary Alice, any comments?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. All right, with that, then, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes. We go to the second item, resolution number 2023-10-083R, a resolution approving a right-of-way license agreement with Champaign County, namely 102 East Main Street. And it looks like John's out of the bullpen, ready to go. You have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And good evening. So, this item, we're talking about County Plaza, the work that Champaign County is doing to renovate that property. And we're gonna focus on one small detail that encroaches on city right-of-way, and so it requires a license agreement. The action that we're putting before you is requesting to authorize the mayor to execute a license agreement with Champaign County for a parking bar, parking garage, sorry, parking garage barrier gate at 102 East Main Street at County Plaza. So there's a proposed barrier gate for an existing parking garage exit that encroaches on city right-of-way for Walnut Street. I'll show pictures, just a minute. Pedestrian clearance will be maintained on the sidewalk, as we verified by surveying the sidewalk. Okay, so on your left, you have a, an aerial exhibit that shows Walnut Street. It's, Walnut is on the east kind of edge of County Plaza, between Maine and Water. And as it shows in that Google Street View image there on the upper right, there is an existing exit for this parking garage. They're gonna continue using it, you know, in much this fashion. They're just gonna add a gate, like a lot of the common, you know, parking garage gates that you've seen. It just so happens, this one raises up higher than the ceiling, so it has to be put outside the face of the building, putting it within city right-of-way. It encroaches about 14 to 15 inches within city right-of-way. So, upon review of their proposed location and the clearance still provided pedestrians, we would recommend authorizing the mayor to execute this license agreement. And if this ordinance is passed, I'm sorry, if the resolution is passed, the mayor executes the agreement, we will record the agreement with the county clerk's office, and then the county will install the barrier gate. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, any questions? Mary Alice, any question?
Yes, I had a question about the sidewalk. Does this limit the size or the width of the sidewalk at all?
It will, it will reduce the width at the barrier gate a little bit, yeah. It will go down to a width of about 5.9 feet. But it is a point obstruction, kind of a short-distance obstruction that is still providing the minimum required width by ADA requirements.
And the gate that is being proposed is a barrier gate that raises, right? It's not one that swings out?
Correct, yes. It'll, it'll go up and down around its housing there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seen none. Do I have a motion?
Okay, I'd like to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Sharice, go ahead.
Move for resolution number 2023-10-1083R, resolution approving a right-of-way license agreement with Champaign County regarding 102 East Main Street be moved to city council for approval on a consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by James. Any discussion? Mary Alice, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. With that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Next item is ordinance number 2023-10-039, an ordinance amending Chapter 23, Article 7, stopping, standing, or parking prohibited in specific places, namely bike lanes. Public Works again, John, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. So here we're gonna talk about a proposed ordinance that will be a general prohibition against stopping, standing, or parking in bike lanes across the city. So, sorry, I'll probably say these phrases a few times through this, but the request is to pass an ordinance to prohibit vehicles from stopping, standing, or parking in bike lanes. So, just the basics here, when a vehicle obstructs a bike lane, cyclists can be forced to merge with other vehicle and trap vehicular traffic, creating a hazard for both the cyclists and vehicles. Currently, neither city code nor state statutes restrict vehicle operations in bike lanes specifically. This ordinance is brought to you, started with BPAC, and went through Traffic Commission and through staff review as well. So from BPAC, they passed a resolution recommending an ordinance to prohibit parking or driving a vehicle in bike lanes, except when actively loading a vehicle. When the proposed resolution they sent to Traffic Commission got reviewed by engineering, by city police, and by city legal, we trimmed out a few items to simplify it and just to make it as enforceable, as practical. we trimmed out a few items to simplify it and just to make it as enforceable, as practical. So we omitted the driving prohibition since technically Article 12 of this chapter doesn't regulate driving, just regulates the basically where a car is parked or stopped. And the the real intent of this was to analyze people who are leaving a vehicle within a bike lane. That's really the the driving problem here. We also omitted the loading-unloading exception because it would make the ordinance more difficult for the police to enforce. It's more straightforward to make it a simple prohibition rather than you can't park in this area except for these conditions. It just makes it more challenging to enforce. And then we did include penalties, really similar to other traffic violations that are already within the ordinance. They were adding towing and impounding as an option for this as it, you know, would create an immediate hazard to to motorists and to bicycles. And there's also a fine penalty added there as well, similar to pretty much any other parking violation in the city. So this proposed ordinance does accomplish, would accomplish, if it's passed, an enforcement recommendation in the 2016 Urbana Bicycle Master Plan. And for these reasons, we would recommend the council pass this ordinance. And if the ordinance is passed, we will notify Urbana Police and University Division of Public Safety of the new regulation that they could begin enforcing it. That's all I got.
Okay, any questions? Sharice, go ahead.
So the enforcement of this addition to the consistent addition, right, to the already existing ordinance?
Correct.
So the enforcement of this will fall upon the the law enforcement and not parking enforcement?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
As with any other parking violations, I mean, it would be enforced the same way as any other parking violation, I should say.
Okay.
Anybody else have some questions? Mary Alice, any questions?
Yeah, just expanding a little bit on what Sharice had asked. Can you expand on why the parking enforcement would not be assigning these fees?
And here I'm going to have to apologize that I don't. I don't know necessarily the operations of the police in parking in terms of how these get enforced. I know that the mechanism for how these are going to get enforced is the same as how current parking violations and moving violations get enforced in the city. So I apologize. I don't know that distinction there.
So it's possible that the parking enforcement would be able to take it?
I'm getting nods from people who know better than me. Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Mary Alice, this is Tim. I believe that that would be the initial thing. It would empower police officers to get things moved when they weren't taken care of. But typically, parking enforcement is the first line of defense with that stuff. Is my understanding.
That makes a little bit more sense.
Okay, anything else, Mary Alice?
Nope.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I will recommend ordinance number 2023-10-039, an ordinance amending Chapter 23, Article 12, stopping, standing, or parking prohibited in specific places, bike lanes, for recommendation of approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? Mary Alice, any comments?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. Next item, ordinance number 2023-10-036, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 23-93 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at a certain intersection, namely Hillshire Drive from Philo Road to Myra Ridge Drive. Again, John, you have the floor.
All right, two more of these, and then you'll be really glad to see Brayden. I promise this will be painless. It's important, but not the most exciting thing. So we have taken you to South Ridge subdivision, the most recent phases that were constructed in the last couple of years, referred to as Phases Eight and Nine. For this first ordinance, we're requesting council pass this ordinance for stop signs to be official on Hillshire Drive from Philo Road to Myra Ridge Drive. This is coming from Traffic Commission, where in our September meeting, Traffic Commission unanimously voted to recommend this ordinance to council. So really, the picture shows it all. So for orientation, South Ridge, here we're looking at South Ridge subdivision with Philo Road bounding it on the west, where Myra Ridge, the kind of primary road there on the east, going north-south. South Ridge Eight was basically constructing Hillshire Drive from Myra Ridge out to Deer Ridge. And here you can see the aerial imagery is pretty fresh. It's from, I think, early this year potentially, where Hillshire Drive was constructed, and there was no time wasted building houses. It's really, you know, filled in there. And then South Ridge Nine consists of Melissa Lane, constructed from Mark Trail Drive to the north, down to Hillshire Drive, and then the last segment of Hillshire Drive, connecting it up with Philo Road. So of course, this aerial image is out of date. We have a full, all those roads constructed now and accepted. And so the stop signs, what we're just talking about for this ordinance, are shown there. Basically, just a eastbound stop for Hillshire at Myra Ridge, a southbound stop for Deer Ridge at Hillshire, a southbound stop for Melissa at Hillshire, and a westbound stop for Hillshire at Philo, where we're treating Hillshire as a through street from Philo to Myra Ridge Drive. And then the minor, the minor streets are getting the stop signs accordingly. And so then, oh, I'm sorry. Yep.
Are you done?
Almost done, real quick. Just for anybody who's paying attention and saying there are already stop signs in place, yes, there are. They were installed during construction, and we have kind of had them enforced as a temporary regulation, waiting for council to pass an ordinance to make them official. And it was only in August, early August, that we actually accepted ownership of these segments after final acceptance and documentation of the construction. So they've been. They've been built, and houses have been built for a while. We just hadn't actually acquired the streets to be city property until recently, so. So that is our recommendation for this ordinance to make the stop signs official. And if passed, we will update our traffic schedule accordingly. Now I'm done.
Any questions? Mary Alice, any question?
Yeah, so it appears that Melissa Lane does not, is that completed, a completed street? It looks almost like it's a dirt street.
Yeah, and this this aerial image is from earlier this year. It is. It is constructed. It's been inspected and passed inspection. I don't know if any houses are starting to get built on it yet, but it's it's cleared for that.
Is it traditional for us to put stop signs before there are houses there?
I would say I've understood that in the past, there was more of a wait-and-see attitude with stop signs, basically to have them generally not put a stop sign up until letting traffic kind of work its way for a while. With this being kind of the completion of this neighborhood, I opted to go ahead and put the stop signs up as there's pretty clear major-miner roads, by the way this is laid out.
And so there's proposed a stop sign at Hillshire and Myra Ridge Road. There's no stop sign going, I think this is north-south on on Myra Ridge Road, is that right?
That's correct.
There's a stop sign on Myra Ridge Road. Okay.
That's correct. So the westbound Hillshire at Myra Ridge does already have a stop sign that was approved by an earlier ordinance. But yeah, you're right. There's. It's not an always-stop at Myra Ridge and Hillshire at this time.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of ordinance number 2023-10-036, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 23-93 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at a certain intersection, Hillshire Drive from Philo Road to Myra Ridge Drive, for approval on the consent agenda.
A second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? James.
Yeah, I'm glad to see this this area finally getting getting finished as a subdivision. I will point out that I'm disappointed that it's now clear that Hillshire is a is a through road here. It has the priority for that, and we approved it as a narrower road than some of the other through roads in this area. I think that was a mistake, but we have to move forward.
Anyone else have any comments? Mary Alice?
Nope, no comment.
Okay. Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion, that ordinance passes and to onto the consent agenda for next week. We move on to ordinance number 2023-10-037, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, namely Hillshire Drive and Melissa Lane. And to wrap it up, Mr. John.
Okay, thanks. Well, I think you know where I'm going with this. I will get to the chase, and let me know if there are any questions about it. So we're talking about the same same new sections of the road in South Ridge subdivision. Now we're going to be talking about on-street parking prohibitions on one or both sides. This again came from Traffic Commission, from our September meeting. Okay, so same image. And here we are touching on, kind of resulting from something that James just touched on in his comment, is that these are narrow streets. They're less than 30 foot wide. And so in the interest of maintaining good access for emergency vehicles, and just practically speaking, there's there's really room for parking on one side of the street to allow two-way traffic. And so we have selected, you know, identified which sides of the street for no parking, being primarily the south side for Hillshire Drive and the east side of Melissa Lane. And then we have the block, basically the block of Hillshire right at Philo, where we're just having no parking on either side with the approach to Philo there. And yeah, so as is written in the traffic code, when a street is less than 30 feet wide, there's a automatic warrant for only allowing traffic, only allowing parking on one side of the street. Yeah, similar as before, we got this, these signs installed with construction, holding them up just as a temporary ordinance or temporary regulation until council passes an ordinance for them. And so that's our recommendation to pass this ordinance. And if the ordinance passes, we'll update the schedule accordingly.
Any questions? Mary Alice, do you have any question?
Yeah, I do. So in general, how are the sides of the street chosen for no parking when you're only allowing parking on one side?
Yeah. Well, especially for Hillshire Drive, we located the no parking to coincide with where the fire hydrants are located. And then for for Melissa Lane, I want to say there was some consideration given to the new cluster mailbox locations. That's kind of a new thing the post office is having. Subdivisions do is have cluster mailboxes instead of individual mailboxes at each entrance. And so that was, there was some consideration given to that location as well when choosing the side of the street.
Okay, thank you.
Sharice.
That now that I don't understand, because there aren't any houses on Melissa Lane. So where are the cluster mailboxes going to be located?
The one I I know of is for sure, there's one in the south end of Melissa Lane on the west side of the street. And I'm, there may be another one. I'm just not remembering where it is. But yeah, no, you're right. It's it's built in advance of the houses being there because the developer installs it. So it's in place before the houses are in place.
Okay, so so that is, I guess my main question then would be, you're anticipating people stopping and just putting on their their blinkers or something to go and get their mail out of the little post office boxes there?
Right. And this this came on pretty late in the, this is, it came down from the postmaster, and it came kind of late in this, the development of this last phase of South Ridge. So it's going to be a little new for us to see how it plays out, yeah.
Okay, so my, I guess my question question is going to be because you have that entire side for no parking on this side of the street, yet you you anticipate there being some stopping and some, I think that if I'm looking at the map correctly, you're anticipating there being some stopping and and something there for, where people are going to be to actually cluster to get their mail. That's one.
Yeah.
So you're kind of criminalizing people getting their post mailbox stuff. You see what I'm saying? There's going to, I think, if I'm looking, I could be looking at the map wrong. Because you said south-east side? Show me, you know, show me, I don't know if you can do a pointer, show me where the the mailboxes are going to be.
Down in this corner right here.
Okay, so they're going to be in that other corner?
Yeah, in this corner here.
Okay, and, okay, so are there going to be any kind of spaces where people can put their blinkers on and they won't, you know, won't hamper traffic coming in other than you saying that nobody can park on the other side of the street? I anticipate there being some traffic issues. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that there will be, but, you know.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying. No, I don't have a good answer for that question. I'm sorry.
Okay, I thought it, okay. Because I I think I anticipate that there will be people pulling over just to stop right in that in that no parking area and jetting across the street to get their their little stuff or whatever it might be.
Sure.
And that can probably be a problem. That's that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, and and I understand that. But I guess with the with the cluster being on the west side, I guess I'd rather allow parking on the west side for, you know, understanding that people are going to be wanting to come over there, so.
Okay. Planner, okay.
Any other questions? Mary Alice, did you have any question?
No.
Can I get a motion?
I'll move ordinance number, I'll recommend ordinance number 2023-10-037, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Hillshire Drive and Melissa Lane, on to city council for approval on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Go ahead, Sharice.
I do wonder, can, can these, can the, um, uh, 036 and 037 be put together? Since they're both the same street and everything, can those be, can those be a, a omnibus or whatever? Okay, 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 sorry.
And, and if I can say, I, I would have liked to, Sharice, it struck me as I needed to keep them separate just because they were two different parts of the code being changed, but, yeah.
Mary Als, do you have any comments?
No.
Seen no, no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes, thank you, John. Next up is Resolution Number 2023-10-084R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant for the purpose of the fire station construction project. Braden, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, everyone, so, uh, Ally provided some, uh, information regarding this grant earlier in the meeting, but I'm happy to provide a little bit more context and also answer any questions that you might have. So, um, the City of Urbana has received a $1 million grant from the, from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, uh, to fill any gaps in financing for the construction of the two fire stations at 1205 Bradley and 1501 East Mumford Drive. Uh, this funding was directed to the city, uh, with the help of, uh, State Senator Paul Faraci, so we'd like to thank him for his help getting this funding to the City of Urbana. I want to just clarify that this is separate from the 1.5 million, um, DCEO funding that was previously approved for use, um, with the fire stations. This is an additional $1 million grant, which would bring the total, um, in DCEO funding for the fire station currently to $2.5 million. Uh, as Ally mentioned, $988,741 will be going directly to reimburse for construction costs, and then, um, $11,258 will be going to community development, um, to reimburse for administrative costs. So I will happily answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Go ahead, James.
So, yeah, I just want to confirm, um, and I, and thank, um, Paul Faraci for his help with this, but this was specifically, um, a grant made to the city for the building of fire stations?
That's correct, it's a, it's a capital, it's a capital development grant, um, that was directed to the city to, uh, to help with the fire station.
They knew what we were planning to do with it when they handed it to us? And it's DCEO?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Als, do you have any questions?
Yes, I'm wondering what the timeline is to, um, spend this grant.
Uh, so this grant has to be spent by the end of the fiscal year.
And does it cover, um, design at all? I'm just trying to figure out when we're going to break ground on the fire station.
Uh, yeah, it, it can cover any of those related, um, design costs or, um, construction costs, hard costs, soft costs as well, in terms of planning, um, and, and construction.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Sharice, will you take the chair?
Sure, I'll take the chair, um, I'm calling Chris Evans.
Thank you, um, so my question is, um, is there a 10% minority women participation on this grant?
Uh, yes, there is, that's the state requirement for capital grants.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, I'll take the chair back, Sharice.
I relinquish the chair back to Chris Evans.
Thank you. Okay, no further questions, can I get a motion?
I'd like to move for Resolution Number 2023-10-084, Resolution Authorizing Acceptance of a Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant, Fire Station Construction Project, be moved to City Council for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by James, any discussion? Mary Als, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Seen no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Next up is Resolution Number 2023-10-081R, a resolution for acceptance of a Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant, specifically Vine and Washington Streets Resurfacing Project. Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, so this is another, uh, grant from DCEO specifically for the resurfacing work done on Vine and Washington Street. As Ally mentioned, that project was completed in fiscal year 2021, so this is a reimbursement to the, to the city for that project. Um, it was specifically passed in the state's 2324 budget for this purpose. It will reimburse for any of the eligible construction costs. Unlike the previous grant, none of this funding can be used on admin, so it, 100% of the funding will be used for construction costs. And, um, to, uh, Councilmember Evans' previous question, there will also be a requirement that, uh, a percentage of the contractors, um, meet the BEP goals for the state.
Any questions? Chandra?
When did, when, when did you apply for the grant, if it was for a, a project done in '21?
So, um, this wasn't a grant we applied for, it was, it was passed in the, in the state's budget as, as part of their, um, their 2324 budget planning. So we received notice back in August that this was going to be a reimbursement for a previously completed project.
James?
So, related to Chris's earlier question, um, when we have, I would assume that since the construction's already done, that we know it's already, the construction that we had done already met the target percentages, um, that are required by the grant, so.
We'll have to work with Public Works on that, but, um, that's what the guidelines are set out for, so, we'll, and we'll also, our DCEO rep will work with us on that as well.
Okay.
They, they determine the, the percentage that you have to meet, and it can change depending on the type of project. That's a, that's the, up to the state's, um, discretion, but they'll work with us on setting those goals. And if it's a, a project that's already completed, they'll factor that in as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Als, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, so I was wondering what the total cost was for the resurfacing of Vine and Washington.
If there's someone from Public Works who could speak to that, that would be helpful.
I don't have that number ready at hand, but I want to say it was between $1 and $2 million.
Okay, all right, so this is between 10% and 20% of the project?
That sounds correct.
Okay, thank you.
Seen no further questions, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for, uh, approval of Resolution Number 2023-10-081R, Resolution for Acceptance of a Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant, Vine and Washington Street Resurfacing Project, uh, for approval on the consent agenda.
A second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by Chandra, any discussion? Mary Als, do you have any comments?
No.
With no further comments, I'm in discussion, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That resolution passes, and we go on to Resolution Number 2023-10-082R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a State of Illinois Department of Human Services, IDHS, grant for supporting municipalities for asylum seeker services. Braden, again, you have the floor.
Thank you, so about two weeks ago, the city, uh, received notice that a grant that we had applied for was approved. Um, so the city, in partnership with the City of Champaign Department of Equity and Engagement, as well as, uh, the Refugee Center, New American Welcome Center, and Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office, we all applied collaboratively to this grant opportunity, and it was approved for full funding for $247,918. Um, this is a grant through IDHS, um, and it will prov, it will allow the city to fund these, the three agencies that I mentioned. We will be, this is for the grant acceptance, we will be coming back to you probably in November with specific grant agreements for each of the agencies. Um, they will be, you know, doing the actual work, um, with clients. Those grant agreements, when we present them to you, will include a specific budget for each agency, how much each agency is getting, um, as well as the specific scope of services that will be provided. Ally mentioned briefly that this grant will be able to support, um, housing and shelter services, including rental assistance, hotel vouchers, things of that nature, um, as well as wraparound service support, legal services, um, to recently arrived asylum seekers, uh, in, in Champaign County. Um, so we're very excited about this grant opportunity, I would like to personally thank all of the agencies that we applied with. Um, it was a quick turnaround, but, um, we, we made it work, and I'm very excited about that. Um, the reason this is coming before all of you is because the City of Urbana is the lead entity for this, for this grant, so we will be, um, the fiscal sponsor, um, but, um, myself and my counterpart at Champaign will be jointly administering the grant, um, including, um, um, you know, reviewing data, making sure that the agencies are hitting their goals, and, um, you know, that everything is working smoothly. So, like I said, we will be having specific grant agreements, um, to go before you, um, shortly, once we have those prepared.
Any questions? Mary Als, do you have any question?
Yes, I was wondering about the support for housing, um, can you expand on what that may cover? So, for example, emergency housing, um, would it cover, uh, rental assistance? I'm just trying to figure out what is encompassed in support of housing.
Yes, um, so two of the agents specific, two of the agencies specifically, um, Cunningham Township and New American Welcome Center will be providing both, uh, rental assistance, which will include, um, a, a fixed amount of monthly rental payments, um, to a private landlord for, on behalf of a client family. Um, and then, um, on the other spectrum is emergency shelter, which would include, um, temporary voucher stays in a hotel. Each of these agencies have had a, a good track record of experience administering similar programs in the community. This will be restricted specifically to asylum seekers, but again, they have worked, they do have extensive networks working with immigrant families in the past and providing this type of housing assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else with a question? Sharice, will you take the chair, please?
Yes, I will take the chair, the chair calls on Chris Evans.
Thank you, um, Braden, I saw in the memorandum, it's 200 adults, 100 children. These are people that are asylum seekers. Um, and, uh, just for the public's awareness, could you define what an asylum seeker is?
I thought someone would ask me that, so I brought, so the grant, um, has a specific definition of who is eligible to receive, um, services through this grant opportunity, um, and I'll read it, because otherwise I'll forget, the, this is the specific definition that the state uses. So the grant opportunity is defining asylum seeker as an individual who crossed the Mexico-US border on or after August 1st, 2022, with the intent to stay permanently, and who does not possess any permanent or interim US legal status, which does not include being in parole status, such as legal permanent residency, a student or work visa, et cetera.
But they're with, they are seeking, uh, they're in the system officially, correct, and they are seeking citizenship at somehow, somewhere, or at least a work visa or something, right?
Probably all of the above.
Right.
That definition might sound specific, but it's actually pretty broad, because it could be someone who, um, you know, is working toward a, a variety of different types of legal status, so, um, it'll, it'll be, um, up to the agencies to really, you know, determine that and to ensure that eligibility. But yes, it'll be someone who's here, you know, who's crossed the US-Mexico border after that date in 2022, who's working to stay here permanently. And, um, again, a, a lot of those clients do have, um, quite complex needs, you know, legal assistance is often very important, and, um, these agencies that we're partnering with, uh, again, have extensive experience providing those services, but, um, this was an opportunity to really expand what they would be able to handle, because there has been an increased need with individuals coming to the community, so this will allow them to really, uh, build capacity and expand, you know, who they're able to serve. Because again, o- oftentimes, one client will need not just housing, but also wraparound services and legal assistance, you know, and so this will just help the agencies meet that need.
But, um, just to be clear, these 200 adults and 100 children didn't sneak over, right? They are trying to do this officially above board and, and within, uh, our rules and regulations?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Sharice, I'll take the chair back?
And I happily relinquish it back to you, Troy, Chris.
Okay, thank you, all right, uh, so that ends the question part of our program, and do I have a motion?
I will gladly make a motion, uh, for, to move Resolution Number 2023-10-082R, Resolution Authorizing Acceptance of a State of Illinois Department of Human Services, IDHS, Grant for Supporting Municipalities for Asylum Seeker Services, with a recommendation for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by Sharice, any discussion? Chandra?
I just want to commend you for, um, working to get this grant, and I love to see the collaboration across, um, entities, not only just in Urbana, but throughout the county as well.
Anybody else? Mary Als, any comments?
Chandra covered exactly what I was going to say, so thank you.
Okay, seen no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That ru, resolution passes, next up is Resolution Number 2023-10-085R, is that an acronym, AS? Or is that a typo? Okay, I'll just read it, I'll, I'll just, uh, AS Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement, namely with Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, Tenant-Based Rental Assistance for the Fiscal Year 2023 to 2024. Again, Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, so this is our, um, Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Agreement with, um, RPC. Um, we, um, do, run this program every year, we fund RPC's Tenant-Based Rental Program every year. Um, so this is the allocation, uh, for the, the fiscal year 2324. It's $150,000 from our, uh, our home program funds that were part of the, the annual action plan that was approved, um, back in April by, by the, by the committee. Um, so this funding will provide, uh, short-term rental assistance, not to exceed two years, uh, to, to low-income clients, um, there's an estimated 15 households that will, that are expected to receive, uh, rental assistance through this program. Again, this is a, a long-running program, the RPC has operated, and, and they have a, a really strong track record of success, so we're happy to, to assist them in funding this program. These funds don't require a budget amendment because they were. These funds don't require a budget amendment because they were included, it's home funds from our HUD allocation. So they were included in the budget that we passed with our annual action plan back in the spring. So this is just to execute this agreement so that these funds can be used for rental assistance.
Any questions? Chandra.
Is the 150 the amount that's allocated annually typically? And that's how they know they could probably get 10 to 15?
Yes, that's an estimate, but the amount that we allocate to them is typically the same every year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Alice, do you have any questions?
Yes, so the home consortium, is that for the entire county? Or is this specific to Urbana?
Yes, so the home consortium does cover the entire county. And so it wouldn't just be residents of Urbana that would benefit from this. Anyone in the county who meets the income requirements and who is seeking rental assistance would be able to apply and receive this assistance.
Am I correct in remembering that the home amount is based on per capita and the different areas within Champaign County?
So both cities, so we receive one pot of money from HUD for our home consortium program. It's typically around $700,000 to $800,000 per year. Urbana is the lead entity, so that funding comes to us. And then the longstanding consortium agreement that we have with HUD is that that pot of funding is divided proportionally between the cities of Champaign and Urbana based on population. So typically, Champaign gets about twice as much as Urbana does because their population is larger. But the home funds need to be used countywide because, according to HUD, we're all really one entity.
So how does the 150 work into the allocation for Champaign and Urbana? Is it split on a certain percentage?
So this allocation comes from what we used to do back in the day, and I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but we used to separate out a third allocation for the county for RPC to utilize. They always just utilized it for TBRA. That was the only program that the county operated. And so over time, we realized it was probably more efficient, rather than separating out an amount of money that way, to just do it this way where that pot comes to Urbana and then we sub-grant it to RPC. And that way, we have an actual, like, subrecipient agreement, so we can prove to HUD that we're, you know, dotting our i's and crossing our t's. But essentially, the money comes to Urbana and then we filter it back to RPC so they can operate their TBRA program.
Okay, thank you.
Sharice.
Okay, so this is a Champaign County thing, right, the money?
Yes.
I'm not complaining about the money or anything. I just want to know how it works. So if there is a TBRA necessity in Rantul or something like that, it'll all go through RPC? It doesn't go through us? Because we're having the intergovernmental agreement with RPC, so that's where they will make their applications?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to understand. Mary Alice brought up the whole thing about the, how we, what the percentages are. So that made me think about other little towns around, like Philo, Timono, or, you know, Rantul, and how that, they would just go through RPC?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I'll move Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Three Dash One Zero Dash Zero Eight Five R. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, Tenant-Based Rental Assistance FY 2023 to 2024. Want to City Council for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Chandra and seconded by Sharice suddenly. Okay, any discussion? Mary Alice, do you have any comments?
Nope.
Okay, with no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That resolution passes. We go on to Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Three Dash Ten Dash Zero Eight Six R. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement, namely the City of Champaign Full Home Improvement Program for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. Braden, again, you have the floor.
Thank you. So more information on the intricacies of the home consortium. So this subrecipient agreement will provide $125,000 from our 23, 24 home funding to support the City of Champaign's Full Home Improvement Program. This is a longstanding program that the City of Champaign has operated to assist low-income homeowners renovate and rehabilitate their home. There's an estimated four low-income households that will benefit from this program over the next year. So slightly differently from the previous, from the TBRA agreement, this $125,000 comes specifically from the amount of home funds that is committed to Champaign. Again, they get a percentage based on their population. So because this amount is coming specifically from that pre-approved allocation, it will be restricted to the boundaries of the City of Champaign. But because Urbana is the lead entity, we are in control of allocating that funding. So you'll notice in the budget that's attached to the agreement, it breaks down per, you know, the per-home cost as well as the project delivery cost. It adds up to all a little shy of $125,000, but that's just to provide some wiggle room just because of the cost of, the increasing cost of materials in recent years. But the maximum that they'll be able to commit to this project will be $125,000.
Any questions? Mary Alice, do you have any question?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
I move that Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Three Dash One Zero Dash Zero Eight Six R. Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement, City of Champaign Full Home Improvement Program FY 2023 to 2024. We move to City Council for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Mary Alice, do you have any comments?
No.
No further comments? Discussion, could the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That resolution passes and we go on to Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Three Dash Ten Dash Zero Eight Seven R. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the University of Illinois and the cities of Urbana and Champaign for consultation services related to fire protection services. And who is the, from the executive, Brandon, oh, I'm sorry, okay, Will, you sneak up on me. You have the floor, sir.
All right, thank you. So today before City Council is a proposed IGA, intergovernmental agreement for consultation services related to fire protection services. So by way of background, through a 1997 IGA between the cities of Urbana, the cities of Champaign, and the University of Illinois, the cities provide fire protection and emergency response services to the university city in exchange for compensation. So as you can imagine, a lot's changed in the 26 years since that original IGA, even though it's been amended twice. And the university has expressed some interest in taking a fresh look at the IGA, the Fire Protection IGA, to evaluate if that is still the most cost-effective structure or agreement to provide fire protection and emergency response services. So given that it can get complicated with both cities providing fire protection and emergency services to one entity, both the cities and the university are requesting to retain a consultant to help us understand what some potential changes to the IGA may be. And so that way, we want to examine the existing level of services, the desired level of services, and any resources that might be necessary to provide those level of resources. So this IGA for consultation services will have no immediate impact on the operations of the city. This is just to get the ball rolling. The City of Urbana will be the lead agency and work with our partner agencies to develop a scope of work for a consultant and then go through the procurement process to find and select a consultant. Completing this IGA as it's written would obligates the city to set aside some additional funds to select a consultant. So there's no budget for this currently, but this IGA does anticipate that we'll come back to the respective parties with a request for funds to pay for the consultant selected. I will note that any changes that a consultant may recommend are just recommendations. And any changes to the Fire Protection IGA require the approval of all the bodies. So that's the University, Champaign, and the university. Just the city provides fire protection and emergency responses to the University of Illinois with our station four being there. So it is likely, any changes will likely have an impact to the city. And other than that, I really don't have too much detail. It's just kind of to get the ball rolling, to start taking a look at it. And this IGA gives the bodies the ability to go do that.
Any questions? James?
Thank you. So two questions. First of all, this is just, the thing that we're passing tonight is approving the agreement to hire the consultant?
This is a IGA to retain consultant services. There is no consultant yet, but in order to kick that whole process off...
But this isn't the IGA about fire services?
Correct.
This is about getting consultation on how we should adjust it?
This is essentially a cost-sharing IGA for that consultant.
I see in the memo that in fiscal year 2024, the City of Urbana received 2.3 million roughly from the University for Fire Protection Services. Is that correct?
Correct.
What's the number for Champaign?
I do not know off the top of my head.
Is it comparable?
I don't know exactly what it is. Most of the university is within Urbana, but I don't know the Champaign side.
Yeah, and there's not a fire station, a Champaign fire station on university property, right? So there's...
No, it's just our station number four.
Okay. It would be useful to know, particularly, do you feel like we are going to be driving the bus in this conversation with the consultants? Because if we're, if we're like 2.4 million of the pot and Champaign's equal, then maybe it's an equal conversation. But if we're most of it, are we responsible for this?
The Fire Protection IGA requires that any changes are approved by all bodies. And the IGA as for the consultation services is written where to progress at each stage, there needs to be consensus between the bodies. So it's meant to be a collaborative approach. And I think it's supposed to be a team effort. I think it affects different agencies differently. I think, you know, the city has a deep and longstanding relationship with the university, but it really is meant to be kind of a collaborative effort.
Yeah, I mean, we took on building a fire station when the university decided to take theirs down, dismantle their fire department. And we took the staff, too, I believe, when that happened. So we have a lot in this. I just want to make sure that we have an equivalent amount of control over the process.
Yeah, it cannot proceed without the, you know, the city wanting to proceed, so.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Alice, do you have any questions?
Yes, so reading through this, it looks like it's equally split three ways between Champaign, Urbana, and the university. Can you confirm that?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions, can I get a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Three Dash Zero Eight Seven R. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the University of Illinois and the cities of Urbana and Champaign for consultation services related to fire protection services. Want to City Council for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Mary Alice, any comments?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Thank you, Will. That concludes the new business. Onto now council input and communications. James?
Yes, I just wanted to announce that I think we have a tentative schedule for a listening session with Chief Boone. That will be November 1st for Ward Seven. And it'll be hosted at St. Matthew Lutheran Church, which is where the Southeast Urban Neighborhood Association has their annual meeting. So people in the ward should be familiar with it. I hope there will be a confirming announcement coming out soon. I believe the tentative time is six, that's a Wednesday, tentative time is 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mary Alice, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, I'm going to call on Chris Evans. There is, we have the same thing, a listening session with Chief Boone Tuesday, October 24th at 6:00 PM. That's Tuesday, October 24th, at the Phillips Recreational Center. That is a block west of Strawberry Fields on Springfield Avenue. The chief will be discussing specific crime issues, he'll be introducing himself, so if you want to meet our new chief, that would be a good time. But also, he'll be discussing specific issues, crime issues to Ward Two, some technological initiatives that the department is considering, as well as some community engagement initiatives. There will also be a question and answer time. So please come out again at the Phillips Recreational Center Tuesday, October 24th. And Sharice Hersi.
And while we're on that, there's a tentative, I'm not sure if it's been finalized or not, listening session in Ward Three with Chief Boone on the 26th of October at King School Cafeteria, possibly. Like I said, it's tentative, so I don't even, I'm not even sure. I haven't gotten things solid. Believe it's going to be at 6:30. Like I said, times are still up in the air, but I will still, I will be putting as much information as possible on the Ward Three Warriors Facebook page, as well as sharing information with our neighborhood group that we have as I get information. But I want to make sure that this is on public record so that everybody that's possibly watching also knows when that happened.
I saw the Ward Three announcement on the Urbana Police Department Facebook page, so it is there. Anything else? Mayor, did you have any comments? Okay, well, that concludes today's meeting. And with no other further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.